Ever you'll find us, loyal and true. Firm and undancin', always will be. Here's to the school we love, dear old winds of hark!
Call the regular Board of Education meeting to order and would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the flutist?
The flutist and the choir, obviously they didn't work with Mr. Lawson because they were excellent. That was, that was very good. And you're talking to a sixty-seven graduate of W H S. So I've, I've been around longer out of high school than you guys are all old.
It doesn't, you're old.
I'm not saying anything at all.
This is my fiftieth year reunion and Butch was ahead of me. So, thank you very much, we appreciated that. Do I have a motion? I hear that Lisa. I hear you chuckling down there. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Keeling, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Anderson, all those in favor by a show of hands, so moved. Item three A, citizens' participation and statement, Dr. Henry.
This is me and this is my city.
Oh, okay, we, we had, we had no one request participation per policy B D D D A.
Written communication?
Uh, no written communication either, Mr. President.
Item five A, military liaison?
Mr. President and board members, friends, uh, just great to be back after the holidays. I think now the fort's back in operation. Now we got all the soldiers and stuff back. Couple of things I'd like to mention, the embedded student program, I know we started, kicked off this year with the school. Looking at next year, you know, we had about ten opportunities out there for some young folks. Looking to see if we can expand that to a lot of different other agencies on installation. So with a great partnership, we look forward to the next seventeen, eighteen school year to see that almost, you know, to really grow that program out there. Just for parents and also for some of the children out there, the youth, summer hire, you will see probably in the month of latter January, February, a lot of positions coming open with summer hire, we should bring on about fifty, sixty people to work at places like libraries, fitness centers, go-kart areas, lifeguards and so forth. And the way people would apply for that is to look on USA jobs under Fort Leonard Wood and they'll see them all announced. So I tell parents and some of our older youth, probably about the February into January timeframe. And just a reminder, all the tax center is available to retirees and active duty military at building three fifteen up at Fort Leonard Wood and they should open, be opening that here real soon, probably in the next week or so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item B, district announcements?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, students, thank you so much. You have some outstanding representatives here of the finest group of people I ever had the opportunity to work with. And I mean that sincerely, students, you did a great job. We absolutely love to come in and hear some, some nice music to start a board meeting. And I know that's the, the product of not only a, a great deal of talent, but also a lot of hard work. So we appreciate it to, to the sponsors, to everyone, thank you for being here. We really appreciate that because it is board appreciation night and we're going to honor our board here in a little bit. So we had a special treat tonight from our students, which, which was outstanding. Tonight, we're going to recognize Waynesville High School. I noticed my high school crew in the crowd here. They're all in smiles back there. Coach Dowell, he's back there too. He's, he's smiling big. No golf clubs in your hand or anything tonight, good. Okay, I want to thank each of you, each and every one of you for all that you do for our students. I look forward to tonight's Spotlight on Education. Volunteering is an important aspect of community service and hundreds of our students participated in the Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service on Thursday, January twelfth, to make a difference in our community. I would like to especially thank AmeriCorps Vista members and staff for leading these service learning activities. Thank you very much. And a short, short announcement tonight, court warming will be held Friday, February the tenth. And we'll have the court warming queen being crowned between the J V and varsity boys basketball games. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Okay, item six A, financials, Dr. Verger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Waynesville R six school district financial report for January tenth, two thousand seventeen and the Missouri Securities and Investment Program, thirty-three million, one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars, two cents. Ten point five million dollars in CDs with the Bank of Crocker. In the general account, four million, forty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars, thirty-nine cents. Payroll account, two thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, fifteen cents. Insurance account, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, thirty-two cents. Total funds, forty-seven million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars, eighty-eight cents.
Very good. Any questions? Items B through G, study session minutes for the nineteenth of December, regular Board of Education minutes for the nineteenth of December, closed session meeting minutes for December the nineteenth. Special Board of Education meeting on January the first and special closed session on January, the, I mean, January of the eleventh. Unless there's a change, we'll accept those as presented. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Keeling, do I have a second?
Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Schultz, all those in favor by a show of hands, so moved. Item seven A, All-State Band, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. An early December Waynesville High School student, Kaitlyn Banks, was selected to be a member of the Missouri All-State Band. Kaitlyn plays the flute. She will perform with the All-State Band in January in conjunction with the Missouri Music Educators Conference at Tantera. Congratulations, Kaitlyn.
Item seven B, All-State Choir, Dr. Atkins.
In November, Wayne, we had Waynesville students who were selected as members of the Missouri All-State Choir. And they are coming forward and Mrs. Long is going to call out their names. And they will also be performing at Tantera in January in conjunction with the Missouri Music Educators Conference.
Congratulations to Kokona Osse. Maya Fluent. Ezekiel Deos. And Esteban Valentin Martinez.
Item eight A, Spotlight on Education, Mr. Beachcamp.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. The Waynesville High School is pleased to honor Olga McFadden for the CTA Spotlight Award this month. This is Olga's ninth year at Waynesville High School. Not only does Ms. McFadden prep for and teach German one through four, but she is also the sponsor of the German Club and is pursuing a master's degree in educational technology. Every other year, Ms. McFadden also leads groups on European tours and she is an active member of the Foreign Language Association of Missouri. In the classroom, Ms. McFadden uses technology to enhance students' learning. She requires students to create podcasts, presentations, cartoons, and has several games for students to review their vocabulary. Ms. McFadden has students set goals and monitor their progress throughout the semester. Students write self-reflections on how they are going to improve their motivation and learning outcomes. Ms. McFadden uses cooperative learning strategies and differentiated instruction on a daily basis. As witnessed by building administration, during one class period, there are typically at least two transitions to different activities. Students are always engaged and active participants in their learning. In talking with students about Ms. McFadden, one student stated that Ms. McFadden is a good teacher and makes learning fun. She adds games into learning and gets us involved in what we are learning. Ms. McFadden has completed various studies and papers on incorporating technology in a foreign language classroom and using special education strategies in teaching foreign language. She's an active member of her P L C team and frequently shares best practices with her foreign language group as well as whole building via professional development. In talking with her peers, one teacher stated, Ms. McFadden has been a great friend and colleague since I was hired in Waynesville. She has many different ideas and is willing to share them with me and the rest of our department. I also know that whenever I need advice from, about something, I can go to her and she will listen to me and give me her honest opinion. Ms. McFadden is not only a great colleague, but she is also a great friend and very deserving of this recognition for all her hard work. The Waynesville High School is honored tonight to present Ms. Olga McFadden with the CTA Spotlight on Education Award.
Uh, we'll skip nine. Could I have prepared words? We'll skip nine. Item nine A, Dr. Henry.
We can't skip your recognition. I mean, I had prepared words here. So, first of all, we have numerous gifts for you from, from across the school district and, and I know our buildings certainly appreciate the work and the volunteerism that you have and, and have demonstrated that. I also know many of you have a, have a, as all of us do, a passion for the fine arts. I want to make sure we had an opportunity to, to hear from our students that work so hard, done a fantastic job. But have a few words about the school board leadership for you here and then we'll recognize each of you individually. When I call your name, if you'll come up, I think Mary Ann's going to want a photo. Two photos?
Photos.
Okay, two photos. Okay, so we'll make sure we get those. But tonight, we recognize the efforts and leadership of our Board of Education and the critical role they play in the operation of the Waynesville R six school district. Being a school board member is a very difficult job that involves the complexities of addressing local, state and national educational interests to provide the highest quality of education to each student in our school district. Upon earning a seat on the Board of Education, school board members give up a significant amount of time, a great deal of privacy and place, and place themselves in the public eye by governing an entity that impacts the most precious resource of our community, which is our kids. Even with all of the challenges of board membership, school board members step up to serve the best interest of students. A school district can only be as good as the Board of Education directs it and allows it to be. Poor governance at the board level can doom a school district and students being served. The great news for us as members of this community is that we have an outstanding school district. This is a reflection of the wisdom, guidance and support we receive from an outstanding Board of Education. With a blend of former educators, business persons, engineers, community members and soldiers, our board reflects the unique characteristics of our community. It is clear that our Board of Education serves kids and our district excels because of this support. So with that, I'll say thank you to our Board of Education. Your time and service to our kids is truly appreciated. So at this time, we'll have a certificate and if you'll come forward, we'll have some pictures with me, which I know you all love the most of all of this. First up, Lisa Schwann. Charles Quinn.
A Kansas man and a Tide guy.
Old Tide.
Mike Keeling. Andy Anderson. Butch O'Reilly.
I know.
Mr. Paul Schultz the second. Dr. Leroy Fulmer. And last but not least, you, you may notice a gentleman that sits at the end of the table over here every board meeting and is an outstanding liaison between our school district and Fort Leonard Wood. And we do appreciate he does a great job, Wayne Bardell.
Probably. Item ten A, proposed twenty seventeen eighteen school calendar, first reading, Ms. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposed calendar for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year is attached for board review and comment. A few highlights of this calendar are, the open house schedules for all buildings are indicated on the calendar. Two evening parent-teacher conferences are scheduled. The first semester will end prior to holiday break. Students will receive a full two-week break over the Christmas and New Year holiday. A one-week spring break is built into the calendar. Inclement weather makeup days are not scheduled during spring break. Graduation is scheduled for May eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, and the last day of school will be May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen.
Any questions? Item ten B, boundary and K five realignment update, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a good start, it's on tonight. Okay, East and Freedom K five realignment. Obviously, we, we have been speaking with the Board of Education for some time about this issue and, and trying to provide information, awareness of the advantages and any issues we might need to, to consider as we encounter this move. When we had our board retreat in July of last year, it was given to us as a charge to, to see this, this process through. We've made a, a great deal of headway in the process, so we wanted to update you at this point in time during the, the mini-retreat this week. You'll also have more information coming to you, very similar to the things you have up here. And then we'll be bringing this back to you as an action item in February. So just to give you an idea on the timing of this. First and foremost, this, this process came out of a, of a letter sent to me from the East faculty. Not all of the faculty, but, but faculty members got together to discuss, what are ways that we could better address the needs of our kids? And how could we do this, build better relationships, work a small, you know, smaller school community in these large buildings? Dr. Atkins will share with you some statistics here in just a little bit that are really quite amazing when you look at the size of our buildings in relationship to elementary schools across the state of Missouri. So when you have buildings of such large, large size, you worry about, okay, how are you developing those relationships? How are you developing the knowledge of, of students as they progress from one grade level to the other? Similar to what we have to, to our schools, say, on post that have about three hundred and fifty kids, you know, move throughout the same school and, and relationships are developed between families and students. So this was something that we really wanted to look closely at, did quite a bit of research, of course, transitions. Certainly, there's been work done on that and they, they say that fewer transitions are better, you know, for students. But the most compelling thing that we looked at and, and something that we know as a district, we have to continue to improve on, is, is academic growth for our subgroup, students, our students that are, you know, our I A P students, E L L students, students of those groups. And almost across the board, they talk about relationships being a key factor in growth for those students. So when I, when I got to look into this, I, you know, personally thought, okay, how do we create in these big buildings, a more cohesive, smaller setting for the kids where they develop that traditional kind of elementary K five type environment? And this is what we've come up with to share and as we've updated you, you know, really the rationale is to create smaller school communities for our elementary students off post. In looking at the data, there's some very clear issues that each of the assistants will talk with you about here in a little bit as far as the detail behind it, but certainly minimizing transitions for students. I think it's also important to, to talk about parents, minimizing transitions for them. A, a big factor for us, less time on the school bus, transportation is, is really a, a home run on this issue. There's much less time on buses, which are always, you know, it's a good thing for kids. Improve relationships, and that's not just, you know, even though it's very important, families and teachers, but it's also trying to improve our relationships among our own faculty, where you have a group of students coming and, and you can talk through collaboration as house teams about, okay, you know, Dr. Atkins needs this in her reading instruction, which is much less than Dr. Henry, I'm sure, but that kind of stuff. We talk about what kids need in the instructional process and that's very important for kids. And then easier on families. We've talked to two small parent groups. We're going to have more open meetings just for input on things we need to consider as this transition takes place. But certainly what we heard from all, with the exception of a, a very few numbers as far as the, the parents go, is it's easier. You know, my kids are in one spot. I don't have to run back and forth between buildings to, to retrieve kids. One parent we spoke to is a, a military parent and, and not been in this situation before where a student was in one area of a building and then all the way over on another wing and then another building altogether at the elementary level. And some of the issues that caused for them, it's quite compelling. You know, we always get asked, why, you know, what's the, what's the big rationale? Well, you know, relationships are key to learning and we feel like this is going to foster better relationships for us. We feel like it's going to address the needs of some of our subgroups of students who have plateaued that we need to make sure improve in the future. That's, we want to educate all students and certainly this will help to do this. And we also want to make sure that, that teachers have that ability to collaborate as a team, both at the grade level and throughout the house. So at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Atkins.
Thank you. As we started looking at this issue, we all realized that our, that East and Freedom are large buildings. And when we were talking about relationships and being able to build those, well, how do you do that? One of our parents that we talked to in one of the small groups talked about the fact that his daughter is in first grade and there's not a single child in her, her class that she was with in kindergarten because we have fourteen to fifteen sections of each grade level. He goes, and there's a very real possibility, she's going to go to second grade and there's going to be no one she's been with for the past two years. And, you know, we, you know, that's pretty astonishing when you think about that, when you think about how you grew up in small schools and who you knew. So we decided to take a look at our buildings in comparison to the state. In the state of Missouri, in last school year, there were eighteen elementary buildings with more than eight hundred students. There were six with more than nine hundred. East and Freedom both fell into that category of over nine hundred students. When we broke it down by grade levels, when we looked at K two buildings in the state, East is at the top of that list with nine hundred and seventy-six students and the next closest was Hillsborough with seven hundred and thirty-three students. And when we looked at Freedom, again, they were at the top of the list for three-five buildings. So these are buildings that are very unique. They're unique in our district because our on-post schools are much smaller. Our two off-post buildings are very large, much less they're in a K two or a three-five configuration. So we started talking after the, the welfare concern came in about what could we do? It's not as if we have empty buildings sitting where we can just build smaller buildings. Now, I will say that there are buildings, there are campuses in the state that have numbers as high as Freedom and East have. But they divide their buildings into smaller buildings and some of them have pretty much a wall down the middle and two totally separate schools. schools or three totally separate schools. They're reported separately, completely separate administration, everything is separate. And that is one option you can look at. We decided to take a look at the house concept, which is really creating smaller schools within your school. So when we looked at this, there will be two to three sections of each grade level in each house and three houses in each building. Students would stay within their house as they move from kindergarten through fifth grade. We would put families within the same house, so really those families can start building those relationships with the teachers in the houses. The teachers can build the relationships with the families and the students, and those students in those houses can start building those relationships with each other because they're going to have friends that are going to be with them as they move through K-5. Another thing that we do want to ensure though is that we have consistency across the building. So we are looking at a model where all of kindergarten would have their special area classes such as art, music, PE, library at the same time of day. First grade would all be at the same time of day so that the teachers on those grade levels can meet as a grade level across the building to ensure that there's consistent planning building-wide so that you don't have each house doing their own thing. And they'll also give students in different houses an opportunity to interact with each other. On our Wednesday morning collaboration time, we are looking at that being a house collaboration so that those teachers within that house can work together to look at the needs of the students throughout their entire house and plan for those. And this is just a map of what it potentially could look like where we show where the houses would be, those smaller houses would be broken up. One other thing we're looking at doing in the house concept is that we would have an administrator or an administrative intern who would work with each house and would handle the day-to-day running of the house, but then those administrators in the building would collaborate so that you continue to have that consistency across the building with your building principal ultimately being responsible for the entire building, but you would have someone who would work specifically with each house. And then that is how Freedom could look. These are not exactly how they're going to look, but those are concepts of how we could arrange. Another thing we wanted to do when we drew the boundary lines is ensure that we balanced out the sizes of the building. So we, we looked at the boundaries and Dr. Berger will be talking more about where those lines exactly will end up. And on our first go-around of boundaries, we ended up with one building had about 900 students and the other had 1,000. And there was no way to just move the one street, so we figured out where to, how to divide the street that made the most sense, and we ended up with about 950 students within each building. But we wanted to go further with that to ensure that our buildings were balanced and that it wasn't where one building became, you know, all of one group of kids and another building looked a different way. And so we looked at our data and when we looked at that, we found that where the boundary line that we drew, which was a very natural boundary, resulted in when we looked at the ethnicity of the students, of our current students, if they were to go to the building based on where they live, it's very well-balanced. When we looked at sped, gifted, students with a 504, looked at our free and reduced lunch rates, they really are pretty balanced, not a lot of variation. We also decided to look at MAP scores, so we looked at our current fourth and fifth grade students, what their MAP scores were in third and fourth grade, to see how their scores would balance out. And again, a very, a lot of consistency in the scores across the two buildings. Are there any questions about any of this and before I hand it over to Dr. Berger?
Looking at, before we get to boundaries here, the buildings, the facilities, you know, both roughly 100,000 square foot, both had similar student populations in them, so we felt like that would fit, you know. Reorganization wouldn't have a great impact in terms of a lot of work to the facility. We did recruit DHA to give us some affirmation, guys in the back here, to that. And, you know, there could be some very nominal cost. You think about facilities, maybe in restrooms, perhaps a playground, age appropriateness for the playground and things of that nature, but really just a minimal cost and working on a plan that I hope to provide to the board Friday that would have no cost. And if there's a cost at all, it would be nominal, so, but working some numbers, so I'll leave you in a little bit of suspense in that. But that was a pretty, you know, from the outset, we thought that was a pretty easy task and it proved to be so far, you know. The second thing was to look at, and Dr. Atkins has touched on that, is boundaries. And the really nice intuitive thing that we were hoping would work out would be able to say, for those of you that are familiar with, everybody's familiar with the district, I know, but Zigganbine Road is real close to the boundaries of Waynesville and St. Robert. So we were hopeful and we didn't have to dig too deep to make that work that, you know, everything in the St. Robert city limits would be assigned to Freedom and likewise everything in Waynesville would be assigned to East Elementary. And that way, folks in our district, there wasn't a lot of guessing. You knew, you knew at least in those two city boundaries, your school assignment, and that was fairly intuitive. And as Dr. Atkins started working the numbers, it worked out really nice. I'm going to read this to you just word for word, right off the PowerPoint, don't like to do that too much, but the road near the city boundaries is Zigganbine Road. Zigganbine Road and all adjoining roads that are in the city limits of St. Robert would attend Freedom. Everything above Zigganbine Circle and outside of St. Robert city limits, we have termed Zigganbine North would attend East Elementary. So there was that area above the St. Robert city limits and over to Y Highway that we really needed to go to East Elementary. Again, Dr. Atkins ran the numbers, did a little bit of sorting, and the numbers really came out really well-balanced. So, and everything beyond that becomes very intuitive. Everything going east of Y Highway, of course, would go to Freedom, and then everything that runs west of Y Highway, including the city limits of Waynesville, would be assigned to East Elementary. So it fell out as nicely as probably as we could have hoped for. Implications on transportation, Dr. Henry alluded to this. This has been a really, a really nice win. I know the board is familiar with the issue of waves. I know Mr. Wilkins is familiar, the principals, parents that have, parents and students have attended Freedom and East. But to put, even as we're tuned out, now this is not the first two weeks of school, but I took the opportunity to just go over to Freedom. I started Freedom and just trailed our buses. So roughly 15 minutes in Freedom loading, you're going to have a four-mile commute, and then you're going to have 15 minutes at East loading for our students. So before our students at those two schools, and of course, the other school does just the opposite, before they ever, you know, hit the road to kind of go to their home, they're on the bus about 30 minutes before go. And so that doesn't even speak to the chaos it creates the first couple of weeks of schools for every patron that is connected to those schools. It is a huge issue. So in that, we think student ride time will be reduced by as much as 30 minutes, and that's, that's pretty, pretty easy do. There'll be some cost savings to that. I'm working on some, some projections for that.